I can't seem to get on, I don't know why. Do you have the camera on in the audio?
The camera is on, okay, meetings being recorded. Okay, so every time somebody says something, the camera turns towards you, so it takes minutes to get used to. Do we have anybody remote right now? It's still at 4:57, so we have a few minutes. Do you want to text Jessica? Do you want to text her? I saw Roberta at the garden club plant sale, or not Roberta, Betty Mogg, she said she was going to come to the next one.
How she do on? Good.
Okay, I'm on Zoom.
Oh, hey, okay, you don't have to be on, I mean, do you prefer to be on Zoom?
Okay, so when you do that, you have to.
Does that work now?
Yep, you might turn off our camera.
Do you need to be on Zoom? Because, I mean, you're-
For town council, we do it, because then we can see who's on chat, who's-
Oh.
So if someone doesn't catch it, someone else will.
You know what, that said-
I just sent her hearts, I have no idea why.
Okay, well, that's lovely.
And then I do a split screen, so I can open stuff and look at it, and then-
So you can see that, is Jessica on there?
There is only-
No, I just got her.
The owl and me.
But you joined through the Zoom link, right? Okay, that's cool.
Thing to see if it's working.
Yeah, thank you.
We've gone through a lot of problems.
So, she doesn't know.
One second, she just got through the door.
Okay, Roberta wasn't able to come in person, but I think she's coming online, that was my impression from her email.
So we have-
We should. Is it like this for all of you meetings, do you just hold your breath until the meeting time?
Just Jessica.
Usually, I only say-
Wait till she-
A couple of meetings like that.
Yay! One more for a forum. We need three in person, so, to make it a-
Some legal, some-
A legal hybrid meeting.
How many people do you have on your-
We have nine on the committee.
Wow, was that big?
Sometimes we have, so, it's been a while, but, yeah, I think when we were doing an all Zoom, we had had everybody a few times.
I was on vacation for a hard, and the hotel and zoomed into a meeting. Nothing.
We are being recorded right now, too, by the way.
Okay.
Exactly. Okay, I'm gonna text Roberta.
Just wondering, like, people, say, say you're in Europe, can you still be able to get in that? Attend your meeting? I figured there'd be all kinds of rules and things.
Yeah, I think as long as you're-
My son goes to Europe all the time at work, and he's doing meetings or WebEx or something.
Yeah, but I mean, to make it like a town, to make it a legal forum, the person-
Oh, you're saying-
I mean, if you move, if you move somewhere else, you can't, yeah.
I mean, but like, I'm still me, it's not like it's a standard, just because of-
But I just figured there'd be specific rules on what you can and can't do.
Any part of it would just be making sure.
As long as you can zoom in, it's two counts.
We could go.
I just texted Roberta.
Yeah, I turned Zoom where we have-
Yeah, she's usually here.
Yeah.
Close to 100 people, and I had-
She needs quarantine today. To come physically, but I thought she was able to-
Australia.
But she also has reverse son, so I haven't-
Let these countries out.
Well, I had just talked to-
But it worked.
On the phone on my way here, I don't, I don't, from the sound of it, I don't think, rings Betty, right? Yeah, I'm really bad at things, I don't know that Betty, maybe, maybe, I don't know, because he was like, oh, I thought he needs a six, and I was like, no, that, their beautification's thing, too, and he was okay.
Yeah, I saw her at the garden club sale, and she said that she would be there. Maybe not.
She's busy.
Do you know what this is? I woke up this morning with two red dots.
Looks like a vampire bite.
Does it itch? This one does. It's a hive or a bite.
You know, I took my zertet, so if it was a hive, it would have gone away, it didn't.
I see it.
And I would think poison ivy, but I haven't touched anything.
Although, my friends used to get it so bad that it wouldn't be one dot, they would just be cut.
Never had it in my life. And then I thought, maybe shingles, but I looked it up, and I thought, yeah, I don't know it.
You get shingles?
Shingles-
Did you get the shot?
I did not, I have to, after I saw this, I thought, oof.
It is.
It's a two-shotter now, isn't it?
I had, I think I had to get two, yeah, the first one, I guess, wasn't enough, and then I came back with that second.
Yeah, my husband got shingles, and they're like, you're not supposed to get it when you're in the village.
We're good to go.
All right, we have a forum. Hi, Roberta, it looks like you're still connecting to audio. Give you a moment, let us know when you can hear us, and when you're-
You should have put a beautification in, and just go out, don't talk about beautification things.
Put it on the agenda.
It's horrible, because if we all just hang out-
I'll barbecue.
If we hang out outside, is it considered an unofficial meeting if we don't talk about beautification?
Probably not.
If you don't talk about beautification.
Yeah. So this just-
How you doing, Roberta, are you able to hear us yet?
Yes, I am.
Welcome aboard, all right, so with your arrival, it looks like we have a forum, and that might be Carol Christensen driving up right now, too. All right, I don't know if you can see who's here, Roberta, but we have me, Jessica, Carol Schneider, and Sheila in the conference room, along with Naomi Rodriguez, who's on the town council.
Great.
And she's as a, an observer citizen.
I guess.
I guess, I guess, how about that? All right, so it is, right now, it is 5:05, and I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And you have, you know who's here, right? You have a list of who's here.
I've already filled it out.
Perfect, sounds good, all right, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and would anybody like to make a motion to approve them?
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, second, that's my job.
Yeah, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, all right, they are approved. Just going through the agenda in order. Under the old business, we have the banner discussion, so we've been talking about this one for a while, it looks like we're making some progress, and Carol's here now, Carol Christensen is here now, too. So we may have some info from her, too, but we got the ARPA funding approved for the brackets, that was the American Recovery-
American Recovery Plan Act.
Plan Act, sounds good, good, another fee, all right, so we, looks like we got the funding approved for the brackets, I don't know the mechanism for actually getting that money, or what the next step is for that.
I can find out.
Okay, thank you, yeah, so I guess we, next step is probably to order the brackets, once we, once we figure out how to, how to do that, and y'all probably saw the emails a few weeks ago, Carol Christensen let us know that there is a Rotary Grant available, and I put in a grant application for that, do you know when we might hear?
Um, we're actually meeting tomorrow to go over the applications, I do know that we've been asked for twice as much money as we have to give, so, I can't, you know, speculate on what they'll decide, but we have to announce it on June 23rd, so you'll know in the next couple of weeks.
That would be great, and I've kind of been holding off on, well, a lot of stuff with the, with the banners, until we kind of know whether we need to beg for the money, too, or whether we just need to get the photos for the banners, so I think once we hear about that, we'll have an idea of how much money we need to raise, and whether we're gonna have to raise a full amount, or whether we'll have some subsidy from, from that grant, I haven't applied for any other grants, I have not seen any others that were, that really would fit the, fit the bill for us, but I'm hopeful that's, I might see something, it does benefit the, the town, and, yeah, that's one of the things, when we did the ARPA funding, they kind of racked and stacked things based on how it benefits the town, and economic development, all that stuff, we fared pretty well with the bracket requests, so I'm hopeful that Rotary will also see that, that-
Do we know, I'm sorry, I don't remember, how much did we ask?
Um, the maximum amount of that grant would be with the $1,000, and it's-
That almost covers it, it's like-
Just $100 or something. So we're pretty, pretty close, so we'll, we'll see, anything, any money's good money, and we have the other, the breakfast money, too, in our accounts, so-
That's true, we don't have to use that for daffodils, like, do the other one.
Exactly, do you happen to know, Roberta, how much we have in our accounts offhand?
I think Christine sent it to everybody, didn't she? I think it was before.
I don't, I didn't see it recently, but it may have been-
I will, I will, if I lose you, I'll come back.
Of course, thank you. Okay, all right, so how about after June 23rd, when we hear something possibly about the Rotary Grant, I'll advertise the banner contest, and we'll, we'll move on from there at that point, and we'll see whether we need to ask citizens for donations. Any, any other talk about banners? All right, next one is the ongoing maintenance of landscaped adopted areas. I've been going back and forth with, with one landscaping company, I don't know the actual company's name, but I've been dealing with, with a guy on the, over Facebook Messenger, who seems interested in doing the area around the Welcome to Gales Ferry sign, just past the senior center, as you're coming into town, like, making some defined edges there, and I asked him to either submit a proposal, or come to our meeting, but haven't heard anything back from him on that one, but he seems going through it.
His name is Jordan Downin.
Oh, that's, oh my gosh, I know who that is, hold on.
Okay, good.
Peak landscaping.
Thank you.
I only know that because I, she always tags them when she posts in the business.
Okay, yeah, and he seems very excited about it, but I just haven't gotten a follow-up from him, so I assume when the time comes, we can probably approve it without too much, too much discussion. So, no other news on those, Jamie Allen has been maintaining the sign at the base of the library anonymously. Just, I just announced that to the town, but she's been, been maintaining that area. Look at the spelling, but right at the Bill Library sign, she took over the other planting there, and she's, she's been doing a great job keeping up with that, so there's some beautiful flowers there now, and hopefully the other landscapers-
Does she want us to do a sign for her business?
No, she hasn't wanted, yeah, she's said no credit, so, that's fine, yeah, but she's doing the most of, of anybody on her signs right now, too, so hopefully the folks who have adopted the other areas will step up to refresh their plants. Is that you again, Roberta? No.
I'm, I'm listening, I'm just looking for my email.
Sounds good, I wasn't sure if you were trying to say something.
No.
Okay, back to daffodils, that's the next one on the agenda. Everything looked great in the spring, I thought it turned out really well, do any of you gardeners know whether they'll eventually, like, synchronize, like, we had the old daffodils kind of sprouted different, at different times from the new daffodils, so-
They will get, they will get together.
Oh, good, okay, that would be nice, I don't want it always to be like, all the new-
Well, it was weird, because we had planted in front of the police station, and then last year, we, last year, we were planting in front of the town hall, and then the police stations came up, and we're like, why isn't the town hall coming up, and then they started to go, and then all of a sudden, these all came up, so it was weird, it was weird.
The one by the school, there was tons of them on the hill.
Yeah.
I didn't see any this year, I don't know if they were cut down or something.
I don't know, I-
Something, trying to think if I saw them. The red on root.
Yeah, but it was like-
The ones we planted by the middle school, they came up, and they were like, my son loved it, and he was like, I planted that one.
And the wall, in the one, 214, is it, the wall outside the school, they were, they were all, they looked really nice instead of a stone wall.
Dumped a bunch of them over there, too.
Very nice, yeah, a lot of the places looked really good, so, yeah, that's, that's good news, Roberta, that they'll, they'll actually synchronize at some point, that we won't always have 2002.
So I did notice, and I noticed this even with daffodil bulbs that were dug up from other people, like, the donated ones that were not brand new, and then also some of the brand new ones, do we think, and I don't know, I'm a newer gardener, do we think that the ones, for example, I planted over 200 bulbs at the sawmill, and I would say about half of them came up, do we think that they're gonna come up more next year, or do you think that they just die?
Some may take a year.
What's that, Roberta?
Some may take a year to come back up.
Okay, so that means that the sawmill is probably gonna be nuts next year.
All right.
So in my office, all the greens came up, but we never got any bulbs.
Yeah, I don't understand.
That's certainly weird, I don't know, somebody said the salt from them, the salt from the road, because they're- No, that, that isn't gonna do it, but they might have split.
I'm not a gardener.
What was it?
Some people- We, we put in such nice big bulbs, that they might have been an age where they split, and the year that they split, you don't get a flower till they get more energy again, but you can put them by the road.
Okay.
Nice, I'm glad we have an expert on this committee.
We could sit here and talk about it all night.
The other thing I wanted to say was just because, I don't know if I ever told you, when we were planting, and I called you and said that Jamie had said, don't plant them, or we were gonna plant them, because the sidewalks were gonna go in, so we started going along the sidewalks between the library and the church.
Yes.
So we put them around the trees, and, but we ran out, so we're gonna keep doing that, so her hope is that, like, we do the parade, and they have the thing now, that that will be all the way down the walkway, so that's whatever.
Do you, did you get a good picture of them while they're in bloom, so you have an idea of how far it went?
I did a little bit, you know how far we went, because we started at the, the doors to the back end of the library, and went out there, and then we stood the circle tree here, and then another tree here on that side, and then we have to do the rest of it, so.
Okay.
So I have an idea, and so we had talked about this, sorry, this just came up, don't mean to derail you, or I figured, I didn't know that thought was over, I'm sorry. But I have an idea, because we talked last meeting about doing daffodils and encouraging people in the town to plant daffodils by their own mailboxes, so that everyone has daffodils, and it's kind of like a unified town feeling, with driving down a street in a neighborhood, and seeing all the daffodils at the mailboxes, and it's kind of fun, and I think we said, like, just let people in the town buy their own daffodils, and don't give them away to them, and things like that, but what if we sold them? Like, what if we bought a bag of 50, and sold five of them for, say, five bucks or whatever, because not everybody needs 50 daffodil bulbs, I know I don't need 50 daffodils, but if it's like, $5, you get five daffodil bulbs to put by your mailbox, and it's a fundraiser for us, so that would be my thought, and like, even just to, like, buy them, package them ahead of time, do, take an order on the resource, or on our Facebook page, and things like that, and organize a pickup location, or something like that.
Because I know it's a-
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't mean to be, I'm always the person that I'm on different committees, where I, I'm the devil's advocate, and I'm open to it, I just think that, you know, for two years, we've been at the farmer's market, saying, can you give us money for daffodils, can you donate daffodils, and now we're gonna turn around and try to sell them back to them.
Fair enough, totally get it, I'm just like, wait, I'm just thinking, get on loud, sure, because I also don't want to be, I don't want, for us to give them away, and have people be like-
Maybe we can sell t-shirts at some point, or something, with the daffodils, or-
Something like that.
It would be fun if we did a, did a contest, saying, ask everybody to plant them at their mailbox, even if everybody doesn't, even if 10% or 20%, and then people start seeing more and more, that'll help us with the more and more, and I don't think that they ever expected that we were gonna help them put them in their own property, they're seeing it's coming up on the town properties, and going, now we want to add to the public's homes as well.
Yeah, let's make it a theme, I don't know if anybody got the events magazine in the mail today, but I meant to bring it over here, but we got a little article in there, but-
It's beautiful, pictures are great.
Thank you, the article itself, we, we say, did that come out? Yeah, I just got it today in the mailbox, I meant to bring the magazine, but I just took a picture, but it says, if you're, we'll be asking for donations and volunteers again in the fall, plant even more, if you're a business in town and have curb access, please consider planting some daffodil bulbs this fall to complement, complement the bulbs in public spaces, we'd love for homeowners to do the same in front of their properties, so-
Yeah, perfect.
I don't have any mail read it, but, so we got, got something there, and this one-
If we could do a coupon, if anybody would do like, any, like, say, Holdridge would let us do a coupon, take the coupon, and put it in the next book.
Oh, wow.
And that'd be coming out in the fall.
Yeah. Trying to think, I'm, it's, I'm, I came from military law, and what you're even doing with money, and it's, these rules are just kind of all, kind of fuzzy, as far as fundraising and having money funnel through the committee, I just don't know how-
Even if we asked them to do, say, 5% off bags of daffodils, and just offer it to them, one, it brings business to them.
Yeah, for the homeowner, too.
Yeah. We get nothing back from them, they're not benefiting in any way, but we're encouraging people to, one, plant daffodils, and two, buy from a local business.
Yeah, go there and say, hey.
Like, go support a local business, and-
So economic, economic development gets some credit for this.
Hey, all right, yeah.
And then they, they essentially get like a tiny little free ad space in the-
With a coupon, yeah.
I get it.
For a benefit of getting people, and say, you get 10% off daffodil bulbs, and that's all you're giving 10% off, so I go and I buy a bag of daffodil bulbs, and then I also buy two bulbs, and I also buy this, or whatever.
Or they could even offer smaller packages, maybe, for that, too.
Yeah.
Does anybody want to talk to Holdridge?
I'll, I'll talk to him.
Okay.
See what they'd be willing to do, and-
Yeah.
I don't know what the, when the next events magazine would come out, I believe they came out quarterly, so-
It's gotta work fast, because it's like, months ahead before you-
Yeah. For this one was about a month ago, so we should have about two months.
I guess July.
But they have to be aware of a coupon that gets cut out, because somebody on the reverse side won't be happy about it, I know that for a fact.
We can probably even consider doing one, because I want to say there's a July, and then like a September.
Yeah, so the one that came out today is probably the June issue, I guess.
So June.
You quartered to 2022, so-
Yeah, so whatever the fall, the next one's probably September.
September, yeah, okay.
So yeah, that's probably the one we want to be in.
That's where you buy bulbs. And if it's going to be too late to put it into the events magazine, we could just advertise, like, you know, if you want to plant at home, Holdridge, say, go in there, mention the LPC, and this-
Yeah. That's it, yeah, that's it. Sound like being it again, so. I mean, they gave us a discount last year on them, and if this is them just making more money, and bringing more people into the store, at the end of the busy season, like, to me, as a business owner, I'm like, that, that seems like a good idea, seems like a fair trade, but then again, it's not my business, so I can't say that they'll do it.
Well, anything else about daffodils? All right. We'll see, I think we're up to 6,000 or so that we have in the ground now, so, pretty impressive, over the course of, I guess, it's been two active years of planting, and then one year in between COVID, so, pretty, pretty good. So, general fundraising ideas discussion, I put in an application for the farmer's markets last three markets of the season, I don't know how long it takes them to, to consider that, but-
Meredith? Yes, I did find the, the report, and it says we had $1,013, but there should be 100 less than that for what I spent on the pots.
Okay, that's including the 400 from the breakfast.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, so, that makes sense.
It has just occurred to me that I never moved.
Oh, Roberta has the thoughts.
Okay, I'm so sorry, I got COVID, and, like, a few weeks ago, and it was not fun.
Okay.
It's like, oh.
Okay, it says $100 for Roberta, I'm sorry.
Huh?
Yeah, we voted, we voted for up to 100, and, yeah, the piece that I have to find out more information, or beautification has to find out more information. The feedback I got was, we could only get a purchase order to use at Holdridge, where we had an account. Now, I don't know if that's so or not, but I could have saved money if I could have gone somewhere else, and then just got reimbursed, so, does anybody have any clue on that?
I don't know, do you, do you know about that, Naomi? So we, when we authorized funding for buying more plants for the planters, we ended up having to buy them at Holdridge, because we had a purchase order through there, but Roberta could have gotten them for less at another location, do you have any idea how?
All I can say is to speak to Matt Bowman, the Director of Finance.
Okay.
And take it from there.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Because didn't we buy some of the bulbs at BJ's, the one here?
Yeah, we got some from Costco, yeah, I think, I think people just went and bought them individually, I don't think we used the purchase order to buy them at Costco, so we can do it and be reimbursed.
I would talk to Matt first, and then talk about invoices.
Yeah, I think people just went there and bought them on their own, rather than having any money go through the community.
Oh, they just donated the whole, I thought we did, the ones that we bought, one time, we didn't buy them at Holdridge. Yeah, I mean, I know we considered that, but I know I went to Costco that weekend, there were five packs.
There was one, or something like that, so, I bought it all for myself.
Or no, I just heard that, though.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I can recall.
Maybe we're all, always going to. Yeah, exactly, so, yeah, I think, I think it always, it ends up being, I guess, more friendly.
Early on.
Yeah. All righty, then, so, yeah, so the farmer's market, we'll see what happens, there any other fundraising ideas, or anything like that?
What are you doing at the farmer's market?
Um, we have asked for a table at the community table at farmer's market for the last three markets of the season, we've done that for donation two years, and we asked for money, and, and/or bulbs, and that's where we've gotten the bulk of our daffodil money from, and with $900 in the, in the account right now, that should cover a good chunk of the banners, too, so that would be, that'd be nice, depending on whether we get anything from Rotary or not, so, we we're probably doing all right right now, depending on what else we want to spend money on. All right, so item five is discussion and possible vote to approve allocating funds for buying new banners. So right now, we don't know how much we will have to spend on the banners, we know they're gonna cost, I think, like, 1100 or 1200 bucks, I don't have the number in front of me. Our next meeting isn't going to be till early October, so if we want to authorize the funding for the banners, we should probably talk about that today, and what we may be able to do is word it in such a way that's, when we have the money in hand, we are authorized to buy them, and not authorize us today to buy them, so, I don't know if there's a specific, we probably work on that, but let me, you guys talk amongst yourselves, while I try to find the actual dollar amounts of the, of the banners. Yes, I think it's safe.
We might be able to word it like we did for the pots, where we said up to.
And that's, yeah. Okay, so okay, so we have each 24 by 36 inch double-sided mesh banner, with reinforced hems and pull pockets, will be $75 each, plus shipping, so, 75 times, we have 14 of them, is anybody able to do any math while we're here? And I have the shipping total.
1,050.
Thank you, all right, and then, a shipping, yeah, I have a shipping, we shouldn't have to pay tax, right? Okay.
No.
Trying to find, we have a shipping.
So is there a possibility that the shipping will go up because of gas prices going up, because a lot of places are changing their shipping prices?
It's possible, the banner price will go up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned that we're going to say, you know, we authorize up to $1,300, and then the banners end up being 1,450, and then we're gonna be like, well, now we gotta wait till October, no matter what, so.
So, okay, here's the shipping info, or brown shipping for the brackets would be $135, which should be included in the cost, in what was, what was already approved for the brackets, and then for the banners, the, the shipping would be $75, so essentially, 15 banners. So essentially fifteen banners would be fifteen. Well, no, no, we run fourteen banners at seventy-five dollars a piece, so the seventy-five dollars is essentially the cost of one uh, one more banner.
So it's eleven twenty-five.
Okay. Um.
Let's go up just in case.
Yeah, so let's uh, say add another ten percent. So it's one twenty-five.
So I'd say up to twelve fifty.
Okay, would uh, okay. So how about um, am I able to make a motion or do I, does somebody else have to make a motion?
It's you can entertain.
Okay.
Can't so.
Entertain a motion.
So. And I would go a little bit higher.
Okay, so, okay, you more than ten percent higher than?
I would probably go to the thirteen hundred.
Okay, all right, so you.
I make a motion to do a maximum of thirteen hundred to for the. But.
Um.
Banners and shipping.
When, when we have the money.
Banners and once we have the money in hand.
You said thirteen.
Thirteen hundred.
I'll suck it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve up to thirteen hundred dollars in funding for the banners when we have the funding available. And Carol Schneider has made the motion. Jessica has seconded it. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi. That's good. Okay, we got the Roberta raising her hand as well. So we got six of us in favor. All right, thank you very much. Well, I will pursue that when it seems right to pursue it, but Bella. Um, I guess once we hear from Rotary and we have an idea of whether we're paying it all ourselves or whether we need to ask for others to to help out.
I will ask if we if we approve tomorrow night, I will ask them if I can let you know ahead of time just because of the timing on things.
Thanks. Yeah, I don't want to be presumptuous or or pushy, whichever whichever works, whatever works for you. So thank you. Um, all right, anything else about banners?
When do we want to open up the photo contest?
Um.
These are the banners with the photos, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to be able to explain to them if they needed any more, like what banners, because there's banners up right now.
Exactly.
It's sort of like, what banners? I'm like, okay, that's the photo contest.
Yeah, I I described it in in here about like what the previous banner themes were, so we'll see. But uh, how about once we have an idea of what's how how we're going to fund them, then we'll open up the photo contest.
Okay, cool.
Um. Alrighty, so Earth Day cleanup, that's the next one. Um, well, we we did our best. Um, made I made some Facebook events, advertised it, got all the parts and 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 stuff too, with parks and rep and. Let's say there wasn't a whole lot of interest, but uh, next year what we need to do is um, plan ahead and have it ask Scara for the um, supplies and during the month of April. I think that's when people are thinking about Earth Day. That's when they want to do cleanup. And it didn't cost us anything to uh, to put on the uh, put on the event, but yeah, it's just that uh, people want to clean up the earth on Earth Day and that is also, and unfortunately, another town happened.
I think it was very difficult because Earth Day fell down to spring break.
It always does.
Yeah, I I don't feel, sometimes I feel like it's like not, it's like the week before or whatever. And then this year, when it was in spring break, I was like, well, I'm not even in the state, like I'm traveling or whatever, so it's very, it's very difficult to.
I think they want to participate as a group too. It's like doing it individually is like, yeah, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think last year we did get a decent amount of people just, you know, showing up, getting their stuff and um, yeah, I just, I posted about a bunch of times and I just could not get any traction on any of the uh, any of the.
I mean, if we saw a really bad part of town, I think everybody would come out in numbers, but it's nothing's really that bad.
Yeah.
Probably the properties are, but.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, I can't be like, everybody need to get this person's front yard.
Exactly. Front yard.
We did a cleanup.
Get advertising for that.
I'm going to say over twenty years ago, I've been in town for thirty-five years, but this is when I did scout. We did a townwide cleanup, this was before we were so concerned about everything picking up certain things, whatever. But we had a townwide cleanup and then everybody had their areas, kind of like what we did a few years ago. And then we had, everybody went to Blonders after, brought the bags, and then we had a contest to see who guessed how many bags of garbage that we collected. And then Randall came and picked it all up afterwards. And we had like a picnic there for everybody that it was, it was really nice.
It's neat, yeah.
I like that. I mean, we do more of like a townwide event thing, because I mean, a couple of years ago was who's going to be the the subdivision captain.
Right, yeah.
So it was more of a like a contest type of a thing, but I think the last couple of years, we haven't had the traction to do that.
We could.
Our committees can find trash. Like you can do beautification, you can do community um, uh, re- CRC, community.
Oh.
Realization.
No, community, it's a committee right now.
I don't know.
It's a CRC, Community Relations Committee.
Okay, yes.
Um, and then you deal with town councillors, you can do the political parties, you know, you can just do a townwide event. Conservation, that could really work. We got to do it.
Which committee collects the most?
Yeah.
Yeah. And you can.
Really do it.
So go somewhere, participate. Start getting the word out.
Mm hmm.
Months and months.
Yes, and the Rotary, we do four townwide cleanups a year.
Okay.
And we made a stupid, it is stupid, it's a trophy. And it has, I don't know, it says roadkill, it says something else on it, but every time we do one, we pick somebody who found the most unique or sometimes the most disgusting or something thing on the, and then they get to get the trophy until the next time. So then we do the next one, the next person that you ordered, and it moves around.
I like it.
So we do something.
Yeah, you guys do a lot of cleanups, really. The hard ones, I think, on the highways.
Yeah, yeah.
That sounds uh, sounds good. Yeah, let's plan ahead for that. Maybe at the October meeting, we talked about the how we'll do that next week.
If you don't want to plant daffodils and you got to clean.
Yeah, that's right. On or the other, choose your weapons. I like it. Well, so the uh, the pots, Roberta, would you like to talk about the pots?
Yeah, I went and got them at Senior Center and.
Thank you.
Thought that I would plant them and be done with it really quick. And I could barely get my um, shovel in the pots, the roots from the Dracina totally filled the pots. So I took everything out, so they have all new dirt. And I did go get the plants at Holdridge and um, I put them out Sunday. We like to put them out when nobody's there, because otherwise everybody's telling you how to put them out, so.
Uh.
I think the next thing we need to do is devise a watering schedule like we did last year. So that people take different weeks to pay attention to them.
Yeah, I mean, last year we we started doing that and then we ended up going to the mayor and he he said that they would take care of it at the town hall and the police would take care of it as well. So I mean, maybe I could just send them an email just to say, hey, plants are out there, can you guys take care of them again?
Yeah, but I think we really do have to follow it up, because if they don't, they won't make it where it's so hot and dry. The only one I know that'll do fine is at the Annex, because Roxanne waters that one. But um, the others would need water at least once a week, if not twice, if we get no rain.
Okay.
I'm not going to do that. I just let go of my out there.
I didn't mind watering, but I was going to.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, you know, I live over in Gilce, Terry, summers are busy. I'm not going to haul water.
There's something.
From there over here, when there's people in those buildings that can do it.
I, you know, I did it one time last year and there's something that feels criminal about it. Like it feels like you're a total weirdo getting out of your car with milk jugs and then watering plants in front of the building when I'm like.
Especially the police station.
Exactly. I'm waiting for them to come outside and be like, excuse me, ma'am.
Yeah, when I, when I went in there last year, because they said that they wanted some jugs or something like that, if they want, if, when uh, when the mayor contacted them, they wanted some jugs, so I went to drop off the jugs and they're like, oh, yeah, we've been doing this, we've been watering them, so. I don't know, it may be one of those things where it's like the neighborhood stray cat that everybody's feeding it and everybody thinks it's their own stray cat.
I don't, I don't think I. Roberta, did you, when you were talking about the pots, did you say they were, the new ones you put in were at the Senior Center?
No, no, they're all out.
Store.
All the PD and the Annex.
Oh, okay, I got you. All right. So we're still talking about just the pots in front of the police department and.
Yeah.
And I guess.
Um, my next suggestion is that we send a note, a thank you note to the secretary at Senior Center for taking care of them all winter.
Okay, was that Monica?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it makes our pots last longer, even if the plants don't do well, just not being in the weather is important for the pots.
Yeah.
So it does help us out a lot that they let us put them there in their atrium.
Okay, I can, I can get a thank you note to them. That's, that's easy enough. They've been very good partners with us.
Yes.
They help, they keep our pots, they they held all the supplies for the Earth Day.
Um, that's a nice little greenhouse in that entranceway at the senior center.
Yeah, so last year when I asked the mayor to, mayor and chief Rich to uh, to do the other watering, they came back right away and said, yeah, we'll do what we've done in the past. We were happy to make it happen.
Should we, should we ask him?
Yeah, yeah, I'll do it again. Just let him know, hey, the pots are out there, we have brand new plants and can you do that again? I can't imagine we'll get any pushback, but yeah, we uh, they can take care of that. We don't need to, the all of us on the committee dealing with it. But I appreciate you, you doing it, Roberta. So thank you, thank you for making that happen. And looking forward to having a look at them once I, once I leave here.
I forgot to take a picture, so if you want a picture of, you know, if we, I didn't know if it was worth it if we could get any publicity on beautification, put pots out at PD and the town hall. Please, you know, because we don't do enough things to get a lot of publicity and that might be one more.
Uh, that's, that makes sense. I have to kill a little time before I go over to the high school after this, so I'll go take some pictures.
Do you think we could make like a little cute, small sign that sticks in the pot that says like, you know, something about what your beautification committee, just to like highlight, even if it's just little.
Yeah.
Something for fun of like, just like keep what you're beautiful or something silly. I don't know, that's, I don't know, just something that like shows that we're awesome.
Yes. Trying to think.
Well, maybe even, maybe even by the next events magazine, if we just had a blurb in there that with the pots are out and beautification, you know, this is one of their projects or something, then maybe in another two or three weeks, the pots would even look better, because they would have grown a little bit more.
Yeah.
So I don't know, but I just think that we, what we do, we do with no financial backing, so I think we deserve some credit for uh, using what we have to our best, uh, for our best resources.
Do they need fertilizer?
I fertilized them before I took them and usually what I do is do uh, folia. I have a little spray thing and I'll, I'll carry it around and spray the leaves again.
Okay.
Very diluted so that they don't get burned.
Nice. Okay, so nothing, nothing besides water for the summer for them?
Yeah.
That sounds good.
But they're only really there about four months, right?
Yeah. That sounds, that sounds kind of looking forward to uh, to seeing, seeing what they look like. Appreciate you doing that.
You are awesome.
Yes, I love uh, I love your gardening skills.
That's right.
All right, um, and that's uh, that's everything we actually have on the agenda. Is there any other old business to come before the committee?
Something.
Naomi.
Okay, so you asked a question about the ARPA funds and how you get them. Okay, Bill Somp says, I think they just request them from Matt Bowman, who's the finance director. Then submit the invoice. I believe Steve Maslin will already be on that, so I don't know what he means about that, but I will give you Steve Maslin's.
I have this, he was the one that quoted to Bill. Yeah, he got the quote, so he may have actually ordered them already. I'll, I'll check.
So, yeah, double check.
Yeah, okay, so. What, yeah, America, I want to do that.
What's the PA?
Plan.
This guy's have to do it, so he wants to make sure he get the right one.
Exactly, yeah. So I was happy for him.
And do you need Matt Bowman's phone number?
Oh, yeah, why don't, why don't you give us that, please? Is it Bowman?
B O N I N.
Oh, Bonin, okay. Is he new?
Mm hmm, okay. He took over for Marcia. And he's too.
I guess.
Oh, four, six, four. Three, two, three, five.
Okay, I will check with Steve Maslin tomorrow to see if he's already ordered them or where, what, where things stand with the uh, with the brackets. And if he hasn't, I'll tell him we have the authorization to do so and we'll figure it out from there. Um, let's see, so request the ARPA funds from Matt Bone and if they haven't already done some, if they haven't already done so.
Um, I didn't realize that he had replaced Marcia Hancock, so when I went with the money from the breakfast, I was pointed to his office and um, he said, I really appreciate that you brought me the money hand to hand, because previously some people have left money in the cubbies in the front office. So I'm just passing it along that he really prefers you to just hand him funds, not leave them anywhere. Uh, he was most appreciative of that, so.
And like four thousand dollars. Yeah. That seems wise. Oh, wow. Any other uh, old business? Maybe I need to add. Um, as far as the new business, um, just heads up, my, my term expires in October and I do not intend to what to stick, stick around as we, as the chair, so if anybody would like to think about, to think about taking over, um, that would be lovely.
Stop making eye contact.
But I've been, I've been here since the, the beginning of the committee. I've enjoyed my time here, um, enjoyed the projects we've put together, but it's probably time for somebody else with a little bit more momentum and and with some new ideas to 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 take over, so just throwing that out there.
Who everyone should show up at the next meetings.
Yeah.
Meredith, um, a question, since most participants in this committee were um, appointed by some other thing they belong to.
Yeah.
Uh, do we go back to those same other bodies and say with like another representative?
Yeah, I'm not sure what happens at this point. Um, I, the committee I came from was the Town Center Committee, which is now defunct. Um, and, yeah, I, I think like we got, I think Sheila, you were just the member at large, right? I mean, you came from uh.
And I think my term expires around Meredith's. I'm going to check with Roxanne and I'm I'm probably going to stay a member, but I'm not, I'm going to continue being secretary. Want to share the wealth, guys.
Oh, you're so good. Meredith, are you staying on the committee?
We'll see, we'll see, we'll see what the, what what volunteers we get, um, but yeah, I'll, I'll figure out what we need to do to solicit new committee members.
So if nobody does it, do, can we, can we, can more people join the committee? Or are we, we can only have nine?
I don't know if we're limited to to nine.
I'm never sure.
I don't know, I'll have to talk to.
But then you have to have a higher amount for.
Exactly. Yeah.
Need a commitment from the members to come to meetings.
Yeah.
I mean, in the beginning, there were a lot more other commissions and groups represented, and one by one, they've fallen to the wayside, so um, I really think to get enough people to participate is going to have to be some kind of a push to those other committees to send a representative or some other way to generate interest.
Listen, anything, Linda just asked me if I wanted to do it.
Yeah.
This would be fun.
This was my first one and now.
Look at you, it's a gateway committee.
Oh, gee.
Only president.
Nine.
But you didn't. Nine committee members.
By town councils.
I know you wanted to join.
All right.
So you said, we'll join this.
Yeah, okay, so we have nine committee members and they're appointed by town council. That's what Naomi just.
So you can't get anyone else unless somebody steps down.
Okay, so I will, then I will step out altogether in order to allow somebody else to uh. But.
And we don't want that either.
Yeah, yeah.
A smaller committee.
Yeah.
Does anybody, do, does anybody want to do?
That's why I said everyone needs to show up for the next meeting.
But do you, do you want to do either one?
Okay.
I'm no, I don't want to be in a leadership. Yeah, I.
Six one.
I have others.
We'll figure out what the, what to do, but anyway, think about if you know of anybody who would be a good candidate to do this and want to recruit them, we uh, we could probably find a way to to make it happen.
The EDC is standing outside.
Yeah.
They've got a good twelve minutes. Sounds good. Is there anything else anybody would like to talk about at this?
I think we're open. Can I motion adjourn?
How about a motion to adjourn then?
I'll, I'm. I motioned the first one.
It's uh, it is five forty-seven and the meeting is adjourned.
Second.
Um, it's Carol. Carol is, all right, thank you so much for joining us, Roberta.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, take care.
Hi, Roberta.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Hi.
Okay.
Five o'clock. You were dead when I came in. B E D.
I did die.
You didn't have beans?
I'm gonna have a lady right now. I'm leaving the hospital first.
Okay, so. This is the more substantial rounds against early morning or Thursday mornings to you that that rain could be heavy. Kind of situation by the planning, uh perhaps more British flood, but it's how to hear by lunchtime on on Thursday and then clearing to get knocked away. So take into account the round coming tonight, get our showers and then the heavier rain tomorrow night and early Thursday, we can see an inch to an inch and a half rain with medical and higher amounts where exactly that heavy rain sets up a little too early to tell. After the Thursday, uh after that morning rain, some afternoon clearing Friday, mostly sunny, less humid. Art, thank you very much. We are taking your challenge by count today starting in week it and some big changes are expected for the Wolfpack Country Fair that will not be held until the twenty fifth. Country Fair is typically one of the state's first agricultural fair. We're a teacher there. Rachel Chetel has been named the twenty twenty two Teacher of the Year by Specialized Education. He's a teacher at high road school. She recently signed an app for students called Fund. Designed to provide them with a realistic experience of managing your money and checking your accounts. So like for you right here tonight, a big night for the new Brits, the high profile players that will take the field and you're welcome tonight. It's time to give a shout out to our graduate Michael Easter for his degree. C C S U. And Griffin has uh just. Dance with me Friday on PBS streaming on Paramount Plus. Threats don't always strike the biggest targets. So help safeguard your small business and combat business security edge. It's advanced security that continuously scares for threats and helps protect every connected device. The choice is clear. Get unbeatable business solutions from the most innovative company so you can be ready for what's next.
Take the top off.
You should never sign anything the insurance company gives you without talking to us first. Don't get hurt twice. Before you talk to the insurance company, talk to us. Call Transom Insurance Home and let our family help your family. We use a cozy arm at every good speed. Leave your drawers at the door and come to a cabaret. When it's good sweet and easy, that eight six zero eight seven three eight six six eight or good speed dot org. It's the one hundred day anniversary of the beloved Mystic River Vast Field Bridge. Download the Don't Miss a Gap for celebration details, including fireworks on the Mystic River presented by Foxwoods. Plus Mystic Chamber of Death in a house mystic. Download the Don't Miss a Gap. I'm not going anywhere. You kidding? There's work to be done. Guns don't melt themselves, you know. When I had cancer. He just said, I have to drive a long distance to care. Not me. I'm not going anywhere. Cancer patients are getting groundbreaking treatment. From Mayo Clinic experts close to home. Look at that. Nice work, girls. City open house and demo day at Garden Nursery Spilled Design Center in West Southfield. Better than they work from ten a.m. to three p.m. This is a large supply of ten year outdoor kitchens and fire pits in Connecticut. It's also three year landscape contractors and designers in the area and for food demonstrations and ten percent off everything for the day. While you're there, you can even get a five hundred dollar fire pit or a Japanese maple tree. Open House and Demo Day from ten a.m. to three p.m. on Bay Ford. At Northern Nursery Seven Design Center in West Southfield. So maybe the club will be working live from Middletown Drive for the time being, but scattered showers will be overspreading the state from west to east. The city temperatures going from the mid seventies eventually only into the sixties overnight tonight. So a much milder and muddier night again with the periods of rain, uh perhaps some rumbles of thunder for the bus stop tomorrow morning. Planned for release some lingering showers by the afternoon with increasing sunshine, low eighties inland, upper seventies at the shoreline. Again, the new company run of rain is the first of several. Break down the timing on the rest. That also includes an impact of the upcoming weekend ahead on Iowa this season six. All right, thank you, Mark. Well, a really big night for baseball and great players with some very famous parents will be on the field. Yeah, this is pretty cool. Channel three's Mark Robbins is live. Andrew Britton to explain it to us, Mark.
Hey, guys, look what I got. I got three guests. We're gonna get right in with the famous names to my right. April Martinez Jr., James Jefffield to my left, and Manny Ramirez Jr. One over from Jay Nick. Guys, thanks so much for joining me. At first, Pedro, we start with you. A blessing or a curse to have uh your name?
My name? I think it's always gonna be a blessing. Just the fact that my father gave me something, I don't think I'd do that as a person. And they're parting the commonwealth, but I think.
Let's get ready tonight. You got.
Very good answer. All right, Jayden, what you wish to buy? Oh, I'll hold it. That's you hold the fan. I'll hold it.
Um I was gonna say it's it's a little bit of both. I mean, the last name like ours, you got a lot of eye rolls, a lot of people watching us, but you know. I mean, anybody that's in my position, you just kind of embrace it. You just play the game for a little bit games. So I think it's a blessing as well.
Yeah, man, what you thought?
I would say it's a blessing. Uh number one, it's a blessing because it gives the opportunity to come out here and try to do the same thing they did. So yeah, that's basically it.
I'll say with you, Manny, but you and Pedro, how long have you guys known each other? Since you were babies?
Babies, yes. Two years old, two years old.
Did they give you a hard time last night, Yankee stuff?
A little here, Mary, but nothing too much. So.
You've known it for forever. You got a story about the Manny Junior?
Manny Junior, uh you know, when we would hang out as kids, we used to cry when they left your house. Only had to leave mine. You know, we were little, so sad departure.
Now you're playing in in a park. I know you got David Ortiz's son with you and his dad played here. Your guy, I don't think your dad's played here, but um can you move on? Did he play in the mix?
Yeah, I mean, that's the ball. That's what I'm hoping to do. So uh but thanks, guys, so much. I wish we could talk a long time.
Thank you, James and Manny. Thank you so much. They're playing the bees of Rock the Rocks. Take it on, the Brits. Catch the game. We're streaming it on the Channel three app. Reporting live in the Brits, Mark Robbins, the free, I was a student.
No pride. That's awesome. Way to go. Coming up on I'm with this news at six o'clock. This is not cool. The city really from a record high gas prices. We're breaking down the latest surge in prices at the park. A state tourist map promoting marijuana, the video that has some criticizing governor. Thinking about updating that outdated bathroom shower, I have some exciting news to share. I'm crew from New York. Because at New Pro, we've replaced thousands of bathtubs and showers, a four year and a dog as little as a day. Just when you think it couldn't get better, it does. We are excited to introduce a brand new exclusive collection of all songs called The Impression Series. This exclusive.
You know, take those birdhouse, bird feedings out, I think. What about the ones in the back? You want to leave that in there and under your garden?
No, those stand there under the porch. How much is there? I don't want any more. I couldn't believe it when Linda told me her daughter and son-in-law got COVID while they were in Singapore. They're really lucky they got home where they did.
Yep.
I guess Singapore doesn't care if they leave with COVID. They just don't want to let you in.
Maybe. How it works then, yeah.
They made sure they had a test and nobody even asked them for the information. They did have to wear masks on their plane though.
They said that the whole time.
Well, that's even changed, yeah. On one of the CDC sites I was on. Somebody said they had um testing positive while they were somewhere. Now they won't let them leave until they get a negative thing, but they can't just show up and have a negative test. They have to have these forms that say they have the right kind of test. I mean, they could be there for.
Especially if they take a test like Ross told me about, but.
Yeah, you could stay positive for a long time. Yeah.
We need a new jar of ketchup.
I think there is one in there. Yeah. Maybe I can focus now on the other one.
I'm gonna take my gas cans over and fill them up. For this five hours, the ounces next week or next month, I put the stills, we saw like fifty gallons.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you. Saving money, the name of the game right now. Before you fill up, check out the pump patrol on the Channel three app. There we have a real time list of the least expensive gas around. Well, it's a little crazy out there. See, we had, as we talked about in early morning weather right now. They could be watching some ways of change on our doorstep. Chief meteorologist Mark Stixson, the May early morning weather center, with an hour by hour look at one hour. Yeah, so we went today bringing in some higher key video. Over the last thirty minutes, the captain moved it here. Uh I've seen some crossing the stuff right now. There's a rotation. Perspective, uh some showers kind of falling across each other. Southeast of New York. There's more rain off the hour west, well in advance of cold front that I mentioned, which is true. So showers on and off this evening tonight and into early uh tomorrow morning. The front itself back across northeastern Pennsylvania, pardon, northeastern Ohio and northwestern parts of Pennsylvania. Uh so you can see on future cast, those on and off showers this evening overnight, there's the potential for some brief downpours, uh even a few rumbles of thunder as we head toward five, six o'clock in the morning. Most of that rain is winding down, exiting at points that after we'll see an increasing amount of sunshine as we head throughout Wednesday after temperature wise for tomorrow, starting in the sixties. Tomorrow night, early Saturday as well as over the weekend. We'll break it all down ahead of the quarter. Thank you. Right there on your phone. The Connecticut Senator about a private family to witness. Stephanie Simoni is in the newsroom with more on Senator Murphy's very important meetings. Stephanie Aaron, this is a crucial week for control as bipartisan talks continue on Capitol Hill. This is video of Senator Murphy heading into the White House to meet with the president at the White House this morning. Murphy had the presence here for about thirty minutes. He called the conversation a good one and said ultimately Congress will need the president's support to sign any legislation that gets passed.
And make that much money and then have spent an additional line of the house.
Well, congrats. They made good money on this one.
Oh, yeah. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
They're paying a lot of money.
These legislation that saves lives. Senator negotiators appear to be focusing on helping states enact or improve red flag laws which allow courts to seize guns from anyone seeking for us as well as new mental health measures and increased school safety funding. Meanwhile, Democrat controlled House plans to vote tomorrow on a gun.
Once they get done, they have a really twenty first century house.
Yeah, they're gonna have a real nice house.
Yep. I mean, it really looked really nice when we saw the pictures and.
But with all their updates.
Sweater pages causing some controversy on site. Isn't a violation of Connecticut's marijuana advertising rights? Republican candidate for Governor Bob Stephanowski thinks so, and he wants the state to investigate. General three's chief investigative reporter Matthew Campbell is looking.
General Bureau's chief investigative authority Matthew Campbell is looking into it sort of this right now. Yeah, Mark, what you just saw was a snippet from a video government blog posted to its official Twitter account for the weekend. The governor's seen as classifying this as a tourism video, not a caffeine video. It's called First Ever Connecticut, it's gonna be one. So let's read it right here. The complaint stems from two things. You see the marijuana leaf and then the lyrics, it's cool to smoke some pot. In his complaint to the Attorney General, Stefanowski cites the general statute which says, "Promoting the use of marijuana over social media is prohibited unless there is proof that at least ninety percent of the audience can reasonably be expected to be twenty-one years of age and older." Again, this is posted to Twitter where users need to be thirteen or older to have an account. We asked Attorney General Tom directly if this social media post is a violation and if he will indeed investigate. He told us Stefanowski's request, quote, "inappropriate and unethical," going on to say, "I will not allow my office and our investigative authority to be manipulated by a political campaign." As Attorney General, I worked with the governor in a special campaign without your permission, to the governor's party's ability. Or Mr. Stefanowski, the governor, I would take the safe position as I do now. We reached out to political experts at a list five at the Connecticut University and none of them wanted to touch the story. Karen LeBong for her insight. She was a former cannabis regulator in Denver and specializes in cannabis law, regulation, and patents.
I think the governor Laun probably used "for judgment" in his choice of words, especially with the word "cool" being in the text. But I do not think that he wrote any of the cannabis advertising laws. I think there was a situation where advertising and promotion.
Now, Governor Laun's campaign responded calling Stefanowski's claim a lie, saying the song encouraged kids to smoke pot. Like your studio, Matthew Campbell, kind of cheers. Matthew, thank you. Still ahead for you right here at six, tax cuts on the table yet again at the state level. What needs to happen to make them a reality?
And West Hartford sent to reveal brand-new mascot names tonight. We are live from Eaton, Maryland.
And let's head outside right now for a live look over the capital city on this Tuesday night. Chief meteorologist Mark Stixton tracking one and one chance for rain out for the morning forecast.
They've called the taxpayers a call for tax cuts and special session to get them done. They say the state has lost, and this is what they're proposing. Would you see the income tax? Suspending the diesel tax increase set for July first, lowering the highway use tax, reducing the state sales tax of five point nine nine percent, and eliminating the one percent meals tax.
The cost of living continues to increase. Oil, the cost of groceries, the cost of just trying to balance a family.
I thought it was the thing that made the part about-
War.
Gold brothers bought me Susan Jewel and then going because their condo and everything apart.
Oh, we knew they did that.
In short sight, I can't large.
Yeah. And I didn't know they did it all over here.
And this year are just getting right back into the cycle of cuts and tax increases.
We don't even hear the name mentioned anymore. I don't anyhow. Hold on, I-
One thing that happened yesterday, I don't know where you were or what it was, but I think I had said to you that it was Barbara Ennio's anniversary. When we were talking about-
I didn't want to hear it, yeah. You could have, and I didn't hear it.
Anyhow, we sent them email, and I said, I hope I have the date right. Um, you know, but at the anniversary, wishing I found correct.
Right.
Whatever else it said. So I sent it to Barbara Ennio, and Ennio came back and said, you got it right. And this year is thirty-five, which is why I thought they were supposed to take this trip if she had a surgery move. They might have been taken anyhow, but anyway. So. Who was it that just celebrated forty? Just, I came up.
Yeah, we just talked about it. Mac and Foster.
Mac and Foster did forty and Nancy and Ed Raspusciou did fifty. And so Barbara Ennio up thirty-five.
He sent me no guys who lunch. We used to do it, and you kind of that in months.
Well, probably then then Barbara.
Plus Ed's accent. How about we go to Subvex next week? He's got a guy he wants to bring with him. The guy's on a sub that's, that is plausible to sub that. I guess what could- Probably, I haven't heard anything about you doing something.
She ain't come to-
Playing something for the high school graduation.
Yes.
The grandson.
No, her granddaughter graduated from college. Her granddaughter is the same age as Julia.
Okay.
And if Julia would have-
She did graduate, that's how you knew that, okay.
Well, when people were posting pictures they took from the plant sale, Susan said, "The first one I've missed in twenty years, but great job, graduation comes first," or something like that. But she was there Friday.
And what she-
She helped set up.
Okay.
But you said, oh, there she is, lab now behind her side.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. You're right. You're right. I forgot about that.
Um. But I believe Susan is much more, um, particular about maintaining friendship with Betty. Now that Linda's not president, there's a different focus here.
We got it.
And not being here in the winter, she gave up specifically, I believe, lots of things. Using that as an excuse, oh, I won't be here, I don't want to be here.
We check out the statewide perspective.
That's fun. Absolutely.
The southwest Connecticut, and this is just the beginning. On-off showers with us this evening, tonight and early tomorrow morning, and more substantial rounds coming-
But see, she doesn't- She did work on the annuals table again, but if she wants to buy anything wholesale, she'll go with Betty. And Betty buys all the plants to do hard set mowling. And last year, that's what Susan did. There's always a motive for Susan to do things.
Along the ninety-five quarter, we've got that suddenly wind today, bringing in some higher levels of dew point. That means, uh, for probably that many of us out there, and that's helping, uh-
And they pick rates. You know.
Wow, Susan.
Yeah. Because then Mowgli has a pizza party or something, that's cool, right? Anything like that.
Well, they've been going there for a long time.
Yeah, only when Linda and Dan-
Oh, okay.
But then, knowing Linda and Dan were moved, moving, all of a sudden, she moved into Linda's place, taking Betty to places. She had a perfect opening to- Because nobody was gonna replace Linda while Linda was here.
Right.
You know. Okay. Well, that was nice of Jan to say we could ask for test kits if we needed some.
If I don't get one tomorrow, tomorrow, Wednesday, I might go ask for some.
Well, we have two.
Oh, then I can take one by winter Thursday.
Well.
And then I'll tell Frank, I'm clear or I'm not clear.
Right.
He's all cranked up because he can't get test kit. I don't know what he's gonna do. He might wanna say split it for a few months and then decide when the summer's-
Back and do it in September.
You know, winter, every time you delay, the price of gas is up. Eight dollars a gallon now, or probably higher today, ten dollars, nine dollars.
And he might have to really get proficient at something, he's not gonna stay with it.
Right.
Whatever. He wasn't worried in the winter. He shouldn't be worried now.
Nope, he had every chance, so wouldn't get it done.
He could have been done, yeah.
That is possible, not stop them from moving forward with the name change at recent heart. Quote, "Attorneyship alleged procedural grievances are without merit." The decision was properly adopted by the board.
I thought it was nice of Jan to offer them.
Yeah.
Now, in the lawsuit, the group calling themselves Hulk Connor United says their career is about history and money. They're asking the court to hold off renaming the schools. They claim it would cost ninety-seven thousand dollars to replace teammates.
When we were talking, Linda said they were surprised that Anya, uh, Prigga, was she all long that said she didn't want kids.
Erin, thank you very much. Well, the progress to be achieved is just about two weeks away now.
I wonder how many more hours would add to that flight, or can you get a direct flight from Chicago? You know, to Singapore.
That's one place I would take a trip to.
Aggressive.
Yeah.
Wasn't such a big fun, you know.
And it's time I'm close to Singapore then. Kennedy or Luardi or Newark or Boston. I think it is, maybe not.
I didn't know if- If we went right over the top.
Yeah.
To Singapore.
I don't either. That's how they go, the top. Because then, who knows what this Russian embargo could be during, so they could let us. A Russian, uh, got mold speaks. Represented United States and everything. He was gonna go to one of those Russian satellite countries, and then he'd let him go to Estonia or something like that.
This year that is coming as Jonathan announces resigning from the PGA Tour.
It would be more official.
And will instead join a different series. That is a newly funded by Saudi Arabia and put together to compete with the PGA.
Good for them.
The CBS Evening News is coming up in just minutes.
And here's Laura O'Donnell with a look at some of China's top teams.
They're glad they're in NATO.
Yeah.
And as a NATO nation, why would they wanna be nice to Russia, right?
Matthew McConaughey pleads for real change and responsible gun control measures from the White House podium. And the heartbreaking item that he brought to remember, one of the slain students at the school. Plus, gas prices hit five dollars a gallon in thirteen states. The surprising news-
Maybe tomorrow, right, we'll be filling up the gas cans.
And we're gonna end tonight with a heartwarming story. And their senior companions. That's outside here on the CBS Evening News. I feel refreshed because I'm not struggling with Seabath anymore. She looks great. I got inspired.
We're getting nothing ahead of us now.
No.
I can't think of anything. Did he send a note to the administration?
Yeah.
Okay, Julie's birthday is Thursday. You, Sylvia. Estimated tax on Monday. Bernie won, Dr. Benz next Thursday.
Two, five, three, four.
Frank Fong. Hello. Hello. Hello, Frank. Hello, Frank. Hello, Frank. I'm feeling pretty good, actually. Yeah, I am. I'm feeling good. I just stopped in Alberta. I was thinking of taking the public test Thursday, Friday, Thursday. Make sure, you know, the east says I'm clear. Okay, okay. What did you find out? Anything or what? I was thinking, we gotta come up with a long-range plan here. You know, uh, there's nobody around anymore. And that, and I got to thinking back, because I'm, I mean, it went from, he moved the whole three weeks, a month or something. In, in a few days, you spoke to him. Yeah, I can't do that, right? Right. Yeah, yeah. Well, I don't, I don't know how many, I, you, you saw me, you know, he's only allowed to do two a week, or do a day, do a day. And I don't know how many days he does that. But he, I don't know, he's a good friend of Steve Kelly and, and Doc Burkin, Gary Burton. I think he's, I, I think he's a good friend. I, I say no anyhow. I don't know, you know. I- Ron. Ron, who that is? Ron. See, there was a guy Coastal had, this is a little incident, Coastal had their own guy. And, and he got in a pissing contest with the feds, and they fired him. And, and, and then there was another guy, he quit. He got in a racing contest with them and he quit. He's, and, and the guy I used to use, open, or two guys I'm gonna use. One, they, 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 he just got old, maybe you're too old to do this anymore. And the other guy said, I'm not putting up with their bullshit, and he even backed the flying jets. And, uh, and the story goes on and on because they, they are difficult for whatever reason. I, 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 I found it interesting because I started searching the net and I went down and I looked. I don't know all the designators, but it's called a, um- I don't know all the design nades, but it's called a, um-